Yep.
All right, okay. I'd like to call the June 11th, 2019 meeting of the Board of Trustees with the Village of Cambridge to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kumier.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Brineig.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
And I'm here.
Oh, McNally.
Yes. Okay, good.
I went backwards. I went from the bottom.
Right, okay. We're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Move to again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Lisa, I trust that the meeting has been properly posted. Can you give us...
Upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the post office, the hometown bank, and the village website.
Okay, all right. That's taken care of. Let's see here. Public appearances. Steve and Lori, you're here on a topic.
Yeah.
Good. Piper, Dave, you're just here to observe. All right.
Observe.
Observation. Okay. Moving on then. Approval of the consent agenda. May 28th and Public Works Committee in May 29th. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for May 28th.
I'll second.
All right. Any observations, comments, concerns?
I'll make my own.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Please signify.
Abstain. I wasn't here for that.
Please let the record reflect that Kathy did not vote on this matter. Okay, moving on. Reports. I'm gonna give you a president's report here. Let's see. I'll take this in order. Met with the Chamber of Commerce. Went down there, and this was, what, two weeks ago, something like that? Yeah. And we talked about a number of things. There was one resident who had expressed concern about a barrel that was by the elementary school here in Water Street, PQ. I drove down there to take a look at it, and it turns out, after talking with Wilbur, that that barrel, that's Dane County. And so, they're gonna be coming out here. They will be finishing that. There's a small section of concrete that was missing. It's about six inches deep. It's triangular. The concern was that somebody would drive into it. So, that will be taken care of. We don't know when, but they expect to have the punch list and kinda come back before the end of summer. There were some folks walking around on a property right behind the Shell Station. I know that this has come up. And we don't know anything about it. I don't, I trust nobody here on the board has been approached as far as any potential new investors on that. But they were out looking at that. And I gave an update just in terms of the Fire Festival, and that is coming up here shortly. Other items that have come up include, we're still having discussions, we want to have a meeting with the town of Oakland to go over what is happening with Blue Jay Way. And I think we're shooting for a date here at the end of July.
July 31st.
July 31st. And because we are gonna go out there again, from what I remember, on this meeting, correct? We were gonna try to do it here, but the library is reserving it, so...
It's already been...
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna go out to the town of Oakland. Another follow-up item.
So, sorry.
Yes.
Before, before we go out to the town of Oakland, do you think this board needs to have a conversation about what we want to present and not present? So, is that something that we'll have in the next meeting, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I've been working with Chris. I'm their clerk out there. We have some...
Some things to discuss at the board options and...
I mean, because, because while I, while I think it was incorrect, while I think the term vitriol was a little bit harsh for the last meeting, I think the concerns is that, you know, things were spoken about in that meeting without having been talked about at this board first. And I think that was the big concern. So, I just wanna make sure that this time we're better prepared.
That is the plan.
Okay.
We were gonna bring that up, I think, at the next meeting, and I think we even talked about...
Or the first in July.
Yeah.
I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay. I expect it'll probably take us a half hour to get through all of that because we're getting more information. So, we just don't have it right now. But we do wanna talk about it at a board meeting, open session. Okay. Any questions on that? Another item, it's follow-up, and this has to deal with the parade and then the drones. We are in the process, Lisa, still trying to get information here from Dane County.
Dane County Sheriff's Department person who works with the drones there will come to the next joint law enforcement meeting and kinda give overviews of what's federal regulation state, what municipalities can or can't do. So, they'll be coming to the next joint law enforcement meeting.
All right. So, hopefully we'll, we'll have that taken care of. Lisa, audit, the audit for our 2018 statements?
The auditors were here three days last week. They feel they've done everything they need to do on site. They're putting things together now. They will be getting the PSC report filed, and then on schedule for July finishing the audit.
Okay, all right. So, we're looking for a delivery of that work product at that time. And then, last item here today, Chris, you and I were here, we celebrated the planting of a 1,000, 1,000 tree. What kind of, is it a, you said a redwood? Maybe a while before it's, you know...
He stepped across?
Yeah. Proportions, but Jay Weiss was here, and a surprising number of people.
It was a group of Dane County or this region's municipal foresters having regular meetings, and he was hosting at this time.
Yeah. Piper was here, and appreciated that. And Jay has been doing a great job with keeping the, the village here all treed up. So, that is, that is my report for you. Move on. Plan Commission. Kathy?
Yep, we met last night, and there was one agenda item, and it was the banks, okay, and the banks signed their new sign.
And it's on this...
Yes, it's on the, so...
All right. Village Office Updates, please. Lisa?
Start out, last week was a very hectic week. As most of you probably know, our company that sends out our water bills accidentally sent out May again instead of the June bill. And as soon as we realized it, we contacted them. They did send out the new bills with a note on it, you know, please ignore the last one. This is your real June bill. We have probably received 250 to 300 phone calls or people coming into the office. Most are very understanding when we say, you know, it was a mistake on their part, pay the second bill. Some had already paid, so we're still working on how to, if they paid and this bill was less, or this bill was more, we don't wanna be charging them late fees and so forth because it was an error. So, we're working on how, we'll work that out within the system. We have contacted the company. They will not be charging us for the services for this month because it, you know, they corrected it, but it's taken a lot of our time. In addition to that, last week, we did have the auditors here three days, so it was a lot of working with them on getting them the information they needed. Thursday, when they were here, we also lost the electricity to the building. There's three legs of power coming into the building. One had gone, the other one was sketchy. When it went off, one of our auditors happened to be in the elevator at the time, so the fire department had to come, get him out of the elevator. Alliance Energy, it took a couple hours for them to get here, get us back up and running. Friday, the computer people came to get the computers back up and running. A switch had gone on the server during that, so they had to get us up and running. We then realized that, at the end of the day, we couldn't scan. That still wasn't running, so that was fixed Monday morning. So, there was a lot going on last week within the office and...
What caused the power outage?
One of the, there's three switches coming into the building, and one of those had gone on Alliance.
Yeah, 'cause it's three phase.
Got it.
So, they had replaced one about two years ago. So, while he was here then, Thursday night, he replaced the remaining two.
Was there anyone else affected, or was it just this, this, it was just for us?
Just us. Just us. And the police are hooked. They had to re-get all their systems back up and running. So, we, so we are working with the police on the drone. They'll be coming. We, I attended a tabletop election exercise that Dane County, or the state had put on. It was very interesting. They've done this around the state with clerks, but this time it was some clerks, but they invited people from other states, their election systems. The FBI was there, the state's cybersecurity, all different people who are involved. And they run through a day of an election in an hour and a half. The clock is running. But it's throwing different things that can happen to you, and how do you deal with it being cyber if your computers are hashed? Somebody ran into a building and killed two people at the polling place. What'd you do? So, you're all assigned tables. So, I was a county clerk, so it's how do you communicate with municipalities, counties, to the state to address all these things that you hope never happened to you, but they are all actual things that have happened at elections. So, it was really...
Somebody ran into a building somewhere and people were killed?
During the polling.
Oh!
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you have to shut down the polling place. You have to go to a new place, inform the people, get a court order to let you stay open long, you know.
Wow.
So, all the different things you have to do. So, it was a very interesting exercise in having those different perspectives. One of the FBI agents was at the table with me. He was our information officer. So, you know, handling, how do you deal with frustrating these things? And so, that was very fun and interesting. We have met with the People for the Furniture for the remodel. We are meeting with them again tomorrow. Barb had done some, we, TIF reporting that was due at the state, that was gotten in. We have a zoning Board of Appeals meeting tomorrow, Thursday. So, getting out the notices and everything for that, getting ready. Cart will be coming back to us with a proposal on possibly renting upstairs. So, their board was meeting, and they'll be getting back to us. I think that's, I think that's a lot of what was done in the last two weeks.
One question. Personnel evaluations and just looking at that, sitting down with folks, has that started yet, that process?
No.
Okay.
No.
When do you expect that to...
We'll start that probably later in the summer as we're starting budget and stuff for next year.
All right, okay. All right. Any other questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Bills. We have a chunk of them this time around.
It was the second batch.
Yeah, their first run was 254,693.81. Second run was $10,303.32 for a total of
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in that amount.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Questions. I see that we're paying Dixon.
Yes.
Has this all been done now? We've got the state sign off?
We did get the okay from Town and Country that the issues that they had with not getting the state permits and stuff, Town and Country said, yes, go ahead and pay them.
All right, okay. That was a big one for me. Any other questions from board members regarding the invoices?
So, the remodel, is there still a portion of that to pay?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the, the first round from Joe Daniels.
All right. Since this is financial, we will have to have a roll call on this one, please. Lisa?
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Brineig.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Kumier.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Looks like the bills will be paid. All right, moving on. Committee assignments. Lisa, what can you tell us about this?
There's a couple changes from when we had made the committee assignments. Zoning Board of Appeals, Dean Hollenbeck had asked to be removed, so we will need to find a new member there. We did add, which hadn't been on the list before, for TIF Review Board, which by, it's a new state law. We have to meet once a year to review the current TIFs. Ellers puts that together for us. We need one village board member or village member. And last year, Andrew had sat on it. Mark said he would sit on it. One public member, Rob Warren, had said he would sit on that. We have Dane County Cities and Villages. Kathy had been on as the alternate, and Chris and Erica had, at the last meeting, said they could be alternates if needed. So, replacing Kathy as she doesn't fit in her schedule for those. Sandy Sopransky on the Library Board had, she is up. She has said she would stay on the board now, so reappointing her. We will have to be looking at the school board representative too. She will be stepping down, but we don't have any yet from the school and who will be replacing her. So, those are the changes.
Okay. I can add to that. I had talked to Rob Warren, and he's looking forward to, to serving in, on that capacity with our TIFs. Regarding economic development, I had approached an individual to, to join two others here. This, this person is quite busy, and he's got a lot going on. So, he decided that he wouldn't be able to do this. So, I have attempted to approach another business person right on Main Street, but that person was not in today when I stopped by. So, I will be working on the economic development.
Well, and I had a call in to somebody from the banking industry, as one person needs to be from the banking, and I had not heard back from her. So, I'll double check with her too.
Okay.
The Historic Preservation Committee?
That, I still need to make a couple phone calls on that.
Right, but, but those were recommended. They weren't required. So, wouldn't it be more important to get it filled versus making sure we're getting the right people?
I was going to check with Historical Society One if they had a historian and, and going from there. So, I will put that on my to-do list.
So, just if, if we can find interested parties, even if they don't, even if there aren't an architect or a historian, I think it would be better just to get that moving. Otherwise, it's gonna be another year, and nothing will have been done with the water tower.
Chris?
For the Historic Preservation Committee, I, Jay Weiss is interested in the historian.
Oh, oh, okay.
I contacted him about that, so...
Okay, I will double check with him, and, okay.
All right. Okay, anything else on the committee assignments, anybody? All right, moving on. Let's get into new business.
A motion to approve those.
Oh, okay.
Changes.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee assignments for 2020, 19 and 20.
I'll second.
Discussion necessary? Okay, all those in favor of the individuals that have been cited here by Lisa for appointment onto the committees, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Please signify by saying "no." Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right. Okay, moving on to new business. We got a sign for Badger Bank.
I apologize. I just realized I didn't put it in the packet. It was in the Plan Commission packet last night. I, I missed that. Yeah, Barb has the minutes here, so she can just review it quick. I'm sorry. I...
Sure.
Looked at it. Oh, you've got it there. Thank you.
I'm pulling it up on my phone.
But it was recommended. It's a replacement sign for the current sign at Badger Bank, but electrical, it won't be a scrolling message, frame by frame. So, it is replacing this one, but our ordinances do say it has to be approved by Plan Commission and Village Board for the electrical signs. Plan Commission did recommend to the board that we approve that sign.
Kathy, do you have anything that you could add from last night?
Nope. It, it's not gonna be a scrolling sign. It's gonna be a frame-by-frame sign. So, it's not, it covers all everything.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the size of the sign is...
Same as the one they've got now. Same square feet.
All right. And then, I asked a gentleman that was here, and I guess he'll have that up by the end of summer. That's what he indicated to me. So, do we want to vote on this tonight, or...
Yes, yes.
Okay, without...
And it wasn't unanimous.
Okay, all right. So, I'll, I'll entertain a motion right now for approval of the sign for Badger Bank.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Any other further questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the sign here for Badger Bank on Main Street, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, hearing none. Looks like the sign has been approved. We'll give them notice. Arts Council requests for a portable stage to be used in the village park.
We have received a request from the Arts Council. They're building a portable stage. The original request was to put it up in Veterans Park and leave it there for the concert series, taking it down to West Side Park for the Fire Fest. Public Works did meet.
They rescinded that request.
Yes.
So, it doesn't matter anymore.
That has been rescinded.
So, what's it about?
I was going through things we had talked about. At Public Works, there was some questions, one, you know, about leaving it there for the whole summer, what it would do to the grass in the park, and it, when moving, to make sure platforms were down, both moving in when it's parked, so that we're not creating ruts in the parks. Insurance, I was directed to contact our insurance company to make sure, being that it was private property located on the public park, we would be covered, which we would be. They did ask that the certificate from their insurance did list us as co-insured, and it would be a minimum of $1 million coverage. So, I was working with Lori, and Charlie is getting that drafted.
You should have received that. Charlie sent that to you.
Oh, I don't know that I've received it.
I'll board his email.
Okay.
I, he, he...
CC'd you?
He sent the one to you.
Okay.
Last week, like a day after you asked for it.
Oh, okay.
So, I will get that to you.
Okay. I'll have to make sure it's not in my spam folder. The building inspector had mentioned he would like to see railings on it, even though it is not a permanent deck. If it was going to be parked there all summer, he wanted it to have the same guidelines as the deck. He did go over the placement of the stage, especially if it was parked there all summer. The vision triangle had been brought up by both the police and the building inspector. I know Mike did say, you know, Chad said if it's not interfering with the traffic, they're okay. Mike did go look. He did state he, if it's parked on the park, he wants it where the utility box is, or south. He didn't want it further north than where the utility is to keep that vision clear at the corner. There was also discussion at the Public Works meeting of it possibly being just parked on North Street and closing that one block of North Street during the events. After that meeting, they did rescind the request to leave it there all summer, rather just bringing it on for the concerts. So, there were still questions. The committee did not make any recommendations one way or the other. It was just get that additional information and...
So, I'd like to make a motion to allow the, the Arts Council to use the portable stage for the remaining concerts in the park as well as for Fire Fest?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion and questions.
What about damage to it?
That's a risk that the Arts Council has to take. If they, if, if it gets damaged, then that's the Art Council's responsibility.
But it's gonna be removed after each concert.
Correct. That's what they've...
I just wanna...
Yep, that's what they've said.
Is knowing the kids in town.
Steve and Lori, do you wanna come up and, and sit here at the table, please?
Yeah, we addressed, I think, all the questions that came up at Public Works. One, of course, is the, you know, moving at every concert and, after each concert. And Richard Wolfe has graciously agreed to store it for us. So, most likely, it'll be outdoor storage in the summer, but then indoor in the winter. But he's gonna arrange for a place at no cost to the Arts Council, which is very, very good of him.
Very generous. It's very nice.
Very generous, yeah. So, we'll be, you know, toying it on the day of the concert, and then the next morning, we'll take it over to Wolfe Trucking, and there'll be a storage spot for it. The, I talked to the building inspector, Mike Finley, and he said there are no state codes for portable stages, which is correct. I've done some research. I could not find any. Janne Funk, who is an architect in town, or was, she's now since lapsed, did some research for us, and she found a document where other people had researched this topic nationwide. And there are some, like, the City of Chicago has some codes and Los Angeles, you know, there are various places. But Wisconsin, many states, including Wisconsin, do not have any codes, you know, building codes for temporary stages. So, there's really, and so, Mike Finley knew that, and he said there's really, it's not a commercial structure. He said he really doesn't have any jurisdiction over it at all. So, he said the only concern he had is a railing at the back, so people can't back off the stage, and that the stairs have a railing. And we're complying with both those requirements. It's a solid, I mean, we're making this stage a lot safer than the old stage. If you guys came to the concerts, you'd see that the old stage is pretty rickety, and we literally had a plastic step stool to get up onto it. So, what we're doing now is quite a bit safer.
I was there Friday night, and I don't know if I was talking with you, Lori. There was one other person. Was, was there any issue here on the height? Because that was brought up to me.
It, it is 32 inches. The old one was 18, so yes, it is tall.
And it's 14 feet high or something?
Oh, oh, the... Oh, the awning? No, it's eleven foot, one inch to the top of the awning. And actually, the old stage at eighteen inches had a ten-foot pop-up on it. And so, this will actually be a little bit shorter than the old stage.
I'll just comment, the question came up when the request was to have it parked there throughout the summer, because the new stage would have a permanent canopy attached to it. So, it would have been the eleven feet all the time, and that's where the concern at the vision at the corner was if it was parked there all summer, if you'd be able to see as you came up to that steps on that North Street.
And we'll have it at least as far away, I don't think we'd be able to pull in any closer to the street, to North Street than the temporary stage was before. In fact, I think we'll be further, just because of the way the trees are and things where we can pull in. I'm guessing we'll be a good twenty to thirty feet off of North Street is the closest we can be. So, I think there'll be no issue with vision. Plus, the awning is just on top, it's, there's no side curtains, so you literally can see through it.
But the supports, too.
They're just arms, they're just, you know, three-inch, so, yeah. But it'll be well off North Street.
Chris?
Steve, have you explored the possibility of just keeping it on North Street and closing that off?
It just didn't seem like a good plan. It's sixteen feet wide, and, you know, when the sides are put down, so it would take up... And then, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of traffic that goes up North Street.
Right, and how far would the run be to the electrical that's in that area?
Well, there's that, too, you'd have a longer.
And that would become a safety issue.
You'd have a longer run.
It would propel everybody closer to the street, which.
Let's close down.
Right, and I just, I... It'll be a lot, it's a lot nicer in the park versus next to the park, so.
Well, and I did a kind of, you know, I knew that was something that was being considered, so I kind of did an observation of traffic along North Street throughout the concert. There is almost a constant flow of traffic through there. So, to divert all that traffic around would be very inconvenient.
Well, and this is actually the, when we agreed to all the concerts in the park and put the electrical in, this is where we agreed it would be.
That's right, that's all been approved.
Yep.
Yep, really, all we're doing is switching one stage for another, is really what we're doing.
And then the tongue on this, the tongue, that'll be just exposed, but it's there overnight.
The Public Works had a concern about that, we'll probably put either a safety cone at the tongue, or maybe even a barrel, we've got a, just like a garbage can type barrel that will stick onto the tongue, is another possibility. We'll do something to protect that. I know there's concern about sharp edges, but things are all sanded and, or will be, so, there shouldn't be any sharp edges.
Now, the trailer itself, are you going to have downwingers on the backside of it? You've got the tongue in the front.
Yep.
And then downwingers in the back.
All four corners have jacks that come down.
Right, and then you also have jacks for the eight-foot, okay.
Right, the wings that come out have six jacks along each side, and then the trailer frame itself has four-corner jacks. So it's pretty solid.
So, I think the Arts Council has done a tremendous amount for this community, and for bringing people into this community. And the stage is much safer than the stages they've used in the past. And it is a, it's going to be a big time saver as well for the Arts Council versus having to assemble and disassemble that state, the stage, whether it's at West Side Park or at concerts at the park.
Well, and for our staff, too, for the village staff.
Right, and for our village staff. So, I think that, you know, thank, I would, I'm personally thanking the Arts Council for creating a much better solution for their stage, and I'm looking forward to seeing the next concert on it.
All right, no further questions?
When is your next concert?
Twenty-first.
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 You must plug on the TV.
Fair number of people, Lori, for the last one.
Five hundred and fifteen was our count.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
Not a record, but a good start for the summer.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the request for the portable stage to be used at the Village Park. So let's vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, looks like this has passed.
Okay, thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lori, really, thank you for everything you do.
All right, moving on, two thousand nineteen.
Steve's sticking, Steve, are you sticking around?
Was there some issue?
No.
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 No, not tonight.
No.
It's recognition.
No.
No.
Future.
That's not quite right yet.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. We have the two thousand nineteen roadwork that's proposed here by Public Works for Long Street. Who wants to take that one away?
Long Street, the one short stretch between South Street and Main Street, Jeff has done a lot of patching on, but it's in very bad shape. He had come to Public Works asking, the budget had had fifteen thousand in it for seal coat and patching. He received an estimate to do that one stretch of road would be fifteen-seven. He has asked to use fourteen thousand from that seal coat budget to get that road done. He would find the remainder of the money within his budget to cover it. And the Public Works Committee did make a recommendation to the board to go ahead and fix Long Street there.
I'll make a motion to approve repaving Long Street between South Street and Main Street at a cost of fifteen-seven, with fourteen coming from the seal coat, patching line item on the budget, and the remainder from the Public Works budget.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion necessary? All right, let's vote on this. Again, it's money, so. Yeah, we're going to go roll call.
Rusty, Bryanick?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Kumbier?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes, all right. Okay, moving on, we've got the Cambridge ordinance.
We have an ordinance and a resolution here, these were also recommendations from Public Works. When we started our fish ponds, we had limited fishing to those under the age of sixteen and to handicapped individuals. We currently had a vague limit of twelve-pan fish. All bass and perch were catch and release. The ponds really are full of fish right now. It has been recommended that we change these. So, allowing everybody to fish, keep up to fifteen.
Pan.
Yeah, fifteen-pan and one bass, that is fourteen inches or longer. We also, so, our ordinance refers to a resolution that we can set the limits and so forth by resolution. They did also want to extend it from September thirtieth to October thirty-first of each year. So, it does change the ordinance as well as the resolutions to allow everybody to fish and change the date and the limits.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash two and resolution twenty nineteen oh five.
I'll second, related to fishing.
All right. Any questions for our discussion?
Just to see if, or where it includes a new sign for the area?
Yes.
That includes a note to say there's no ice fishing, so apparently there's people out there last year sitting on the ice, so we don't want that happening again.
All right.
So I've been working with Jeff to get that sign. Also, we'll put pictures on the sign of what the bass looks like, and what the panfish, so that people know which is.
Which ones they can keep and which ones they can't, good.
Yeah.
Is that the only kind of fish that are out there, bass and, what, sunnies and crappies?
There's.
Bluegill.
Bluegill.
Bluegill are out there.
I call bluegill a sunny.
There is also some perch.
Oh, perch, okay.
Yeah.
Is perch considered a panfish, then?
They are considering it panfish. There aren't as many there, so, you know, it's just the bass that they wanted to limit.
Yeah, and that makes sense. Good.
All right. Okay, these have been bundled, so I guess we can just vote on it as one single item for approval of ordinances two thousand nineteen dash oh two and resolution two thousand nineteen dash oh five pertaining to the fish ponds. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion has been passed and carried, so we're good. Moving on, the Village Hall remodeling, and it looks like we're looking for a little extra money. Lisa, what can you tell us about this one?
I do have a memo in the packet of what the cost today, have, well, what the bids were, the costs we've incurred so far, some estimates. As we know, the HVAC had been separate from the remodel bid. When we took the loan out for this building, the board voted to not finish it until we had the remodeling done, so that is a separate line item. I do have, we had ninety thousand nine hundred from the state loan, the foundation grant ended up after Public Works getting their lien to thirty-eight, eight fifty. So we are about a hundred thousand dollars difference. Public Works did make the recommendation to go out for borrowing for a hundred, ten thousand for any, you know, the furniture and rearchitects remaining is estimates at this time. We, there has been some discussion, too, after the shooting at the municipal facility in Virginia Beach, the glass that we have, and I have not received the estimate after, Joe Daniels was supposed to get me one, the glass that we have at the counter is a tempered glass. It is, you can open two sides, but they can be shut, there is the hole to slide through into speaking hole on each of those ends. He was going to get some estimates of what it would be to add either laminate to the glass that would.
Prevent shattering?
Prevent.
Yeah, prevent the shattering, hold it together, or a thicker, heavier glass, and I have not received those estimates from him yet.
Well, they should be made of bulletproof, I think.
Yeah, so, you know, he was going to get those estimates, I don't know what the cost difference would be for those yet.
So, so what's, what's the plan from the staff? Are you planning to keep the windows closed, are you planning to keep it open like what we do upstairs today?
Vicky would like to keep it open, it's nice to be able to open it, because oftentimes we're, you know, looking at a document explaining, okay, you have to sign here, this, you know, explaining things, so it's nice to open. If people are coming and just dropping off a bill, you know, we can use the slot and just slide it through. In a small town, you like the personal contact and having it open, but, safety concerns, we did add, the door going into the office space is locked and would be a buzzin', so people can't come into the office space, but.
At least you're controlling it a little bit.
Yeah, any of these precautions, you know, there's a door there, if somebody wants to shoot the door, they, you know, is giving time for staff to get out the back door, you know, giving a little extra time.
I got a question here for you, Lisa, so we're looking at a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
No, we're looking at a hundred and, isn't there a difference of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty-nine, seven fifty? We don't need that amount?
We had a hundred twenty-nine in funding already.
Oh, that's the, that's the current funding, got it.
Is two thirty, so.
I read it incorrectly.
Yeah, a hundred, the committee recommended a hundred ten.
Got it.
Okay, talk to our project creep. Anyway, we're looking at a hundred and ten. So how are we proposing to come up with this money, and what do we do, short-term and then, you know, permanently?
And that's, would be a directive from you for us to look at the loan possibilities through the financial institutions here, looking at the state again, through their loan to see where we could get the bass. We could roll it in with the loan for the water tower that had been approved, so rolling both of them together to look for better rates and so forth, too.
Okay.
Yeah, in the meantime, we'll use the funds we have to pay the bills we have, but then they'll be replaced with.
We can do all that within forty-five days, sixty days?
We'll.
All right. Okay, well, I guess at this point, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that.
I'll make a motion for the Village Board to seek additional hundred and ten thousand to finish the Amitson Community Center remodel project.
I'll second.
So, under discussion, so we're supposed to have an impact statement for everything? So, can we really do this without knowing what the, what the percentage is that we're going to be paying on it?
This is giving us permission to go out. Any loan we take is going to come back to the board.
Okay.
This is just telling us.
We're not going to spend more than a hundred and ten thousand.
So we're not agreeing to spend the money, we're just asking you to go look for it? Okay.
And, but she, if bills do come in, though, she's got to pay them.
Well, she, well, she has got some, she said she's paying with.
Right, absolutely.
Well, and the thing is, she pays, if we don't get the loan, then we're just using our reserves.
Right.
To pay for it.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
The board approved the project, the work has started, the work is almost finished.
But I just want to keep everything consistent with, with loans and, and money.
But this is just telling us, yep, go out and seeking any loans, we'll come back to the board for approval.
With those loans, can you keep the finance, Audit and Finance Committee, then, apprised of what that is, and probably even have a special meeting, I guess?
Well, the water tower is going to come out of, out of the water, out of the rate payers. That's, so that's sort of separate, but you can't combine the two, and those just have to separate it for the payments.
Okay. All right, we had a motion and with a second for approval of this, so with no further questions, can we ask for a roll call?
We can, we don't need one, it's not spending any money.
We're not spending any money?
Yeah, that's right.
We can have one, but.
Are we all right if we just vote here?
Let's do a voice vote.
Voice vote.
All right, roll call, please.
Okay.
Whitworth?
You can have a roll call, you can have a.
I thought we were doing individual.
Okay.
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Kumbier?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Bryanick?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes. All right. Okay, moving on, correspondence?
None.
None, all right. Meeting announcements, upcoming meetings. We have a Village Board meeting here on June eleventh, Library Board on June twelfth, Water and Sewer on June eighteenth, Licensing Committee, June twenty-fifth, Village Board meeting on June twenty-fifth, Personnel Committee to be determined, and a joint meeting with the Town of Oakland on July thirty-first at their offices.
What time is the Licensing Committee meeting?
Would quarter two-six work, or?
You tell me what time I need to be here, because I'll just have to make it work.
Yeah.
Five forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
What day of the week is that?
It's the Tuesday, right?
It's right, it's before the board meeting, okay.
Okay, going on. Item twelve here, questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items. I think this is the same as last meeting.
Yeah.
I have, I have one item that I just want to, so I noticed, I noticed our agenda is accurate, but the Planning Commission agenda... but the Planning Commission agenda still refers to as old business versus unfinished business. So can we make sure that all of our agendas reflect unfinished business versus old business? I'm reading Robert's Rules of Order book.
Okay. Anything that you need from us regarding the recognition of Steve Strass?
No, I am waiting, I had ordered the plaque, I have to see when Steve is available and get that ready.
Okay. Nothing new on here on the bicycle grant, and then.
I will be working to get to the, Rockdale provided me with a copy of the, a draft, RFP, they'd like to go out at the same time, so I want to just make sure it covers everything we want, see if we have any tweaks.
Okay, all right. Anything else from anybody? All righty, I'll entertain a motion, then, to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to.